Yeah, you're.
Yeah. Just working on it. A little bit.
I think he's, I think he must be, I didn't know he was going to be here, but he just must be supporting Jim, yeah. And not, you know, not to support, but just to.
Yeah, it's weird.
Tanner, do you play hockey? No, okay. I thought they said Tanner Campbell scored a goal, and I was like, I wonder if it's, are there two? Tanner Smith?
Ready? Great. Hello, everyone. Do we have, I can't remember, do we do a motion to, we just start with the pledge?
No call to order.
Okay. Here we go. Everyone now, please join me for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Of the minutes from our January seventeenth meeting.
There's a typo, it's my typo, but it's January seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, so I don't know if anybody noticed that on the, on the agenda.
Do we have any questions or discussion? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes of January seventeenth, two thousand eighteen.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to invite anyone from the public, if they have anything they'd like to ask or address the school committee? No? Okay.
All presenters.
Okay, so why don't we just move along into reports for the school committee, starting with Dr. Antonucci.
Yeah, just a short report here, I just want to update you on the search for the Assistant Superintendent. I talked to you last month about, about the timeline and the process a little bit, but just to give you an update, the application deadline is two days from now, Friday, February ninth. We have put together a, I think as of today, is a fifteen-member search committee. It's a, you know, representative of search committee, for lack of a better term. Julie is going to be representing the school committee. It's comprised of teachers and administrators, parents, it's a, it's a good group committee chaired by Tim, who's promised to find a replacement as gooder, as good as him. It can't be better. Can't be better. But Tim actually has, the search committee has a kickoff meeting next Monday, February twelfth. Interviews, as we said last time, are scheduled, tentatively scheduled for February twenty-eighth and March first. We're gonna, we're gonna meet that target. And the, the charge of that committee is, is a few things. They're gonna, we're gonna send them probably about, and I'll talk about this, but probably about fifteen, fifteen applications, and we're gonna ask the committee to whittle that down, probably to about eight to bring in for semifinalist interviews. Then the committee then will conduct the interviews and then submit to me three or four finalists. And then we'll kind of run the rest of the process, and then I'll come to you with a recommendation for hire, probably at the next meeting, which I'll talk about in a minute. So that's kind of where we are. And just, just sort of where we are today, before I came over here tonight, we had, I believe, thirty-five applications with two days left. Some are more viable than others, obviously, but it's, it's actually a decent pool, and I know we're gonna end up with a pretty strong round of candidates to interview and ultimately hire. So that's really the update. And just one other thing, I, last, last meeting we talked about changing the date for the next meeting. And I, I think we all agreed for March, that March fourteenth works for us, does that? Did we confirm that? We can confirm that, you don't have to look right now, but that'll, that'll actually hopefully give us the chance to bring forth the recommended candidate to that meeting. Any earlier, we would, we wouldn't make it.
Yeah, March fourteenth.
Okay, great.
That's great.
Great. So, okay, so next school, guys, next school committee meeting, March fourteenth.
Yeah, I would just, I would keep a placeholder for March seventh. Because, you know, our budget dialogue has, is ongoing, so there may be a need for us to get together before town meeting, which is Saturday, March ten. So just, like, keep a placeholder there, fingers crossed. Okay, so Shannon won't be able to weigh in then, but just, just, just try not to plan something else on the seventh if you don't already have a commitment.
Great.
That's it?
Great.
Super. Mr. Farmer?
Welcome to the meeting, everyone. At this table previously, I've spoken about putting together some professional development for the summer. We did put out a request for proposals to our staff, and they're starting to trickle in, which is really exciting to think that Duxbury staff will be teaching Duxbury staff about a variety of different topics. What we're really focusing on, we're requesting proposals for things like inquiry-based learning, technology integration for the purpose of developing critical thinking and problem-solving skills, co-teaching, the socially-emotional learning, reading comprehension strategies, and making global connections. Those were the top vote-getters from among our staff on a survey of what they were looking for. So that's exciting. Yesterday afternoon, we started a graduate-level class here in Duxbury. It's the Sheltered English Immersion Class for, class for teachers who have had English-language learner students in their class. There are eighteen Duxbury teachers in the class, it's exclusively for Duxbury, and teachers can also take it for graduate credit, but it's a certification requirement or recertification requirement. So I think teachers are happy that we were able to provide it here at a much less cheaper cost than if they were to go elsewhere. They would pay triple the price.
And that's recertification for all, all teachers, K through twelve?
If, if they've had an English-language learner student in their classroom, then all K through twelve teachers have to take this course within one year of having that student.
Okay.
If they, if, I teach thirty-five years and I never have an ELL kid, I don't have to take this graduate course. I have to take what the, it's a fifteen-hour PDP workshop, which is really a synopsis of the course.
Okay.
That's a recertification requirement.
That's what I was thinking, okay, thank you.
On January thirtieth, we were scheduled to have met with Jeff Sun Associates, the company that's doing the tech, the digital literacy technology review. That was a late start day, so that was canceled, but that's rescheduled for Monday. And we've now changed our locate, meeting location three times. So I'm announcing now, for the two members of the committee, we're going back to the room inside the library at the high school.
Well, they have better food.
High school, middle school. I'm sorry?
We get better food there.
We do. So I will put that notice out to the rest of the committee tomorrow. But Jeff Sun has given us a draft of a report to look at about, based on his observations and survey data, as well as our feedback. And the purpose of the meeting next Monday will be to finalize that report, to give him our final input before, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to bring this report to you. If not on your March fourteenth meeting, then your first meeting in April. And finally, I, I don't think this district has been in the habit of attending educated job fairs. However, this year we'll be, we'll be represented at educated job fairs at Simmons, Leslie, and at a, a job fair sponsored by the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. And I think we want to hire the best of the best, and the best of the best don't always apply through school spring. You have to go looking. So I'm very excited that two different workshops or two different job fairs in March. Some of our administrators will be representing us, and we're gonna look really snazzy. We've got a tablecloth to put over our table that says DPS, and we've got a little, you know, sign that's five feet tall that has great pictures of Duxbury on it. And I'm putting together a brochure with, you know, Dr. Antonucci's face square in the middle. So for the, for the, we know that we have retirements in some classroom positions already. So for those positions that we already know about, you know, we could actually wrap up some of the highest-quality candidates before the middle of April, which would be wonderful. That's it, thank you.
Okay, super. Mr. Pearl, a report from the business manager.
Today I went to a MasBo meeting, which is my organization for business managers. A little bit of update, we had someone speak, Jay Sullivan from the Desi. The circuit breaker for FY seventeen eighteen, they're saying that we might get a little extra percent on that. We usually get around sixty-five or so percent. It might go up as high as sixty-eight to sixty-nine percent, which could be about forty to fifty thousand extra for us. That's this year. The bad news is, next year, they're projecting circuit breaker at this moment at sixty-three percent. So that's, you know, quite a bit of difference. And the governor revenue projection for next year is about three point five percent new growth in revenue. And the governor is, at the moment, his budget for chapter seventy is based on twenty dollars per student, which is about sixty-three thousand dollars for us.
Minimum, minimum increase.
Increase. And if, and if we get the thirty, which would be the minimum increase, would be about ninety-three thousand. And that's about it.
Alexis, you wanna give us a student report with Tanner?
The DHS musical Cinderella occurred two weekend, two weekends ago and was very successful. The cast and crew did an amazing job, and as usual, the pit orchestra played the night's music. Student Council is currently working on its biggest project of the year, hosting Spring CMAS Conference on April third. There are three of these CMAS conferences a year, and Duxbury is excited to be the host school for the spring. At this conference, there will be hundreds of student leaders from throughout southeastern Massachusetts, engaging in workshops and learning about leadership. Duxbury is excited to be planning this event and is meeting with the CMAS student board in the next few weeks. On February first, MEFA hosted a college admission informational night in the DHS presentation hall. This event was open to parents to learn about the college process. And additionally, a student-to-student college night was put on by the student council in late January. The purpose of this night was to allow for open discussion on the college process, and it was open to all juniors, whether they were in student council or not. And the feedback was really positive from the juniors that were there, so hopefully it can be even bigger in the future.
And today, students are headed to, in the top band and chorus programs are headed to Carnegie Hall to perform, and they will be staying there through Sunday, or Saturday, sorry, and will have the opportunity to explore the city on their free time. Senior graduation is right around the corner, and during I-Lab today, seniors were measured for their caps and gowns. The course selection for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen year will be open February twenty-eighth, and students will have the opportunity to choose their classes for next year, and also have the opportunity to choose electives, which are unweighted classes like student chef, woodworking, art, and Holocaust. And lastly, the sophomore student council is planning their event of the year, which is called Touch Truck. And this event is on May fifth at the high school, and cool cars, trucks, police, fire, and other special vehicles will be on display. And there will also be like fun family activities, and the proceeds are going to the student council and Crossroads for Kids. So the officers are working hard to make the event a success and looking for anyone who has cars on display in the town that are, want to show them off, they are more than welcome to, so they can contact me. My email's tannercampbell@duxbury.k12 MA.us, or our class advisor is Mr. Files, which is M. files@duxbury.k12 MA.us. Yeah.
Super. I'm gonna hold my comments for a little bit later when we talk about the budget, but Kelly, you have anything you'd like to?
I do, I have one thing that I came across, well, actually, two things, but this, I, we had talked a couple, well, at the beginning of the year, in response to the swastikas and stuff that had gone on in the middle school, and I just happened, this jumped out at me in a review of the Globe. There was this short film called The Number on Great Grandpa's Arm, and it's about a ninety-year-old survivor who is telling his ten-year-old grandson in very child-friendly terms about his time in a concentration camp and about the Holocaust. So I thought, you know, we've talked about, well, jeez, these middle school kids and high school kids might not really understand because they haven't learned about the Holocaust yet. So I thought, you know, it just, it's illustrated with watercolors, so it's very gentle. I thought it would be a nice thing that maybe we could look into for the Alden Age students. And then the other piece that sort of goes in, because I'm on the technology review committee, and just in general, with every bit of madness in our country right now, there was a really good editorial in the Globe Monday about the lack of digital literacy and how adults, and especially right now, we, we are being, it's so much easier to be pigeonholed in our belief system because we're latching on to whether it's fake news or whatever you want to say. People don't know how to authenticate sources. And it's, my feeling, our job, and I think everybody's feeling here as educators, that we really, that's the piece that's missing. And we've talked a lot about it, and Duxbury is trying to do that, and really teaching kids what is an authentic source and what isn't, and what's fake news, and, because it, not only for a research paper, but it's having a huge impact on our society, as we can see. And people are, there's less critical thinking, because people are just going to, well, I believe this already, and this sort of backs up my belief system, so I'm just gonna stick with this source, instead of having that open mind and meeting different things. So those are my, my two things of the last month. Yeah?
Anything else, anyone wants to add, or? Okay, perfect. Okay, so why don't we move right on to a report on the science curriculum review?
If I could ask Kathy Shea, Rita Marie Benoit, and Kathy McCarthy to come to the table? Kathy Shea, to the right of Dave, is the STEM teacher at Shannon Middle School. Rita Marie Benoit is our elementary curriculum coordinator here at Alden, and Kathy McCarthy is the six through twelve science coordinator at Duxbury Middle and High School. And this review was conducted actually last year. In September and October, to be perfectly honest, I don't think I was with it enough to realize that we even had a review. And then around November, somebody said, don't you think we should put the science team back together again? Sure, why not? So we started, really didn't start until November or December to get the science committee back together. And consequently, the presentation for the curriculum review from last year is not being presented until this evening. But I take responsibility for that, not the people who are presenting. So Rita Marie, I'm gonna undo from the screen, so you can take over. And thank you all for being here this evening.
Ken, I'm gonna start things off.
Hold on a second, just get us into presentation mode.
Okay, as Tim said, my name's Kathy Shea, and I'm a STEM teacher at DMS. And I have two of my prior students, I don't know if I had you for STEM, though. Was that when I was in the math department?
I took you as STEM.
Oh, okay, oh, great, okay. You too, Tanner, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it might have been actually the first year, because this is our fourth year in STEM, so. But prior to that, I was in the middle school math department.
Just a quick question, has anyone, I've been in your STEM class, and I've seen the action in there. Has anyone else seen that class? It's really, it's super phenomenal.
You're welcome to come anytime. The kids love showing off the things that they do.
A lot of moving parts.
Yeah. So it is, it's a lot of fun. So last year, I joined a group of teachers representative from all four schools to review our existing curriculum in science, as well as to review the new standards that we're now required to meet. And we all met monthly, and each, each month, we focused on a specific issue or topic. And we started off with looking at our current practices and instruction and evaluating that. And then we went on to the new frameworks to see what we already had in place and what we would have to work on in order to meet the standards. Okay, back one, okay. During one of the months, we spent some time analyzing our MCAS data. Historically, the students in Duxbury have done well on MCAS and AP exams in science. And one month, we took time to review student work, and I think this was probably my favorite meeting, because we got a chance to share from kindergarten through seniors in high school to see the breadth and the creativity and how it developed. And as teachers in separate schools, we often don't get the chance to find out what's happening in Alden or Chandler. So it was just a wonderful exchange of information, to see not only what the teachers were doing, but what the expectations were of the students from the younger grades on. We also did quite a bit of work reviewing some of the current research on inquiry-based curriculum, because the new standards are truly all around inquiry-based learning. And then we did evaluate some programs that are available to meet those requirements, and we'll talk more about that later, some of those that we have actually chosen.
The next several slides are really in the deck more for your reference to go back to later, if you really want to see sort of the base of information that the state put forward in terms of the shifts in the pedagogy that, that goes along with the new standards in 2016. And you'll probably remember, some of you, back from when we went through this with the math shift in the standards, that the math practices were really the key shift in what we needed to do to move our kids from thinking just about computation and thinking about analytical thinking. And, and the same carries through really with all, each and every framework that we've gone under review with since. So in, in the science, it's no different. We're focusing on relevance and rigor and coherence, and the state has many recommendations to make about making sure that your curriculum materials and your programming are giving students those opportunities. And so all of this is tied, in science especially, to this notion of engagement and making sure that the, the lessons have a high level of engagement for students, that they're developing wonder and passion and taking ownership in their own learning, and that their, their investigations are conducted and designed by themselves, and that they, they go through the, the inquiry design process and the engineering design process. And the state has lots of information. We put a few charts in here that are helpful for you. But, you know, underscoring it with this notion of engagement will help you understand as we chose programming shifts and material shifts and textbooks that it was really based on all of this recommendation from the state.
So to piggyback on what Rita Maria's saying, the next three slides are basically giving you a background as to what the recommendations are for the science curriculum, K through twelve. In 2016, Massachusetts adopted a new science, technology, and engineering framework, trying to look at taking less of the content and trying to look at the content through the lens, whoops, of these science practices which are listed there. Again, we're trying to engage students in active learning, we're trying to work on their critical thinking skills, we're trying to get them to really understand how science works and where science information comes from, so they see it as valid and they see it as an important part of their world. Again, these slides are just a way to show you both how those frameworks developed and also the interrelationship between the new frameworks of math, science, and ELA. There's a lot of overlap, and there's lots of ways that we can integrate K through twelve, the different strands of math and English and science, and work together and try to build a stronger foundation for our students across the board. One important thing that our committee looked at, which in terms of looking at curriculum and looking at materials, was the transition to the testing. We don't like to focus too much on testing, but it, of course, it's an important part of what we have for student expectations. And this year is the first year for grades five and eight, where they're doing what's called the overlapping standard. So they're looking at the old frameworks, they're looking at the new frameworks, and they did a big Venn diagram, and where those, that diagram crosses, they, they're choosing those standards from there. That's what the students will be tested on, grades five and grades eight in science, technology, and engineering this year. Next year, in spring of 2019, they will be converting to the new standard. So grades five and grades eight will all be the 2016 standards, which include content and the science practices. So we're trying to prepare our students for that. One important note is this year, last year, math and English did computer-based testing. This year, we're gonna add science, grades five and eight into the computer-based testing. And so it's really important that our students have the opportunity to practice taking computer-based tests, because that's what the MCAS are gonna be delivered to those students who can take it on the, on the computer. So, and in 2019, they'll continue. Into the high school, it's gonna be a little different, there's a, because it's a graduation requirement, there's some timeline that they're not, there's some legal issues that they have to look at, and so we're not sure when that switch over is going to happen. We're assuming sometime in the next two or three years.
The format of this slide is familiar to you, it's the, it echoes the curriculum review cycle that, that we live by. I populated the curriculum review cycle with just science spelled out by year, so you could see where we've been and where we're headed for, in science, starting last year, as you know, with our subcommittee work and the outside and internal reviews. This, and we began to review materials and programs, particularly for the elementary level. This year, we've done some professional development with teachers to give them an opportunity to unpack the standards and get used to the shifts and see where it applies. We've inventoried our materials, and we have continued to review materials and selected a program, which I can talk about in a little bit. And next year, we will implement that, and the middle school is also shifting a bit in their scope and sequence as a result of the recommendations out of the state. So that decision's been made, and that will start next year as well. And then we'll continue to support, support those changes with professional development, and then the curriculum mapping will follow, and we'll be ready to look at it all again. So between the two reports, the one from the outside consultant and our internal report, things were identified that are actually going well in our schools already. I'm not gonna talk about all of these, but some of the high points at the elementary level, the STEM kits that we have from the Museum of Science Engineering is elementary, are, are very well-suited still to the, the new standards and the practices. So that was a plus. And the, we had brought in the Sphero's and some other robotics components last year, and they were, they thought that was a great start to getting at the digital literacy and the programming goals. And then they did see evidence of inquiry-based activities in classrooms, not necessarily across the board, but definitely they saw evidence of it, and students doing investigations, collecting and analyzing data. And we had lots of conversation about the difference between following a lab procedure and designing your own, and that's sort of part of what has steered our thinking going forward. They felt, and we do, that switching classes in grades three through five for science and social studies is a real positive. It, one, it solidifies a timeframe for teaching science and social studies. In the elementary grades, it's very easy for those subjects to get pushed out of the way. Literacy and math are so important still, but when you switch classes, there's a time schedule that helps you stay true to the, you know, making sure that curriculum gets attention as well. And, and it helps teachers be able to become a little bit more of an expert in one area versus trying to teach everything. And the only other thing here, the science fair, they, you know, that was pointed out as a positive. It's still very popular, very well-attended. And the programming that we bring in from the Museum of Science, New England Aquarium, and some other outside organizations for sort of internal field trips that come to us, those are very high-quality and going well. The new pond at Chandler is a great outdoor learning space for. The new pond at Chandler is a great outdoor learning space for those kids and that was funded by the DEF. And that was a real positive for their, learning some of their life science topics.
There were also many things that were identified as going well in both the middle school and in the high school. And I know this not just from a teacher's perspective, but as a parent of two Duxbury graduates. I think it's extraordinary what our teachers are doing across the board in the middle and high school. But especially in the high school, the breadth of choice that our students have. Of course, we have the standard science courses, but we also have computer science courses and web design. You can learn Python, you can learn Java. We have TV production, woodworking, filmmaking. We have a wonderful family and consumer science group. And Student Chef is one of my favorites. A few times a week, they make lunches for the teachers. It's very reasonably priced, tastes good, and they actually deliver. So those are all wonderful options, and my own children took advantage of many of them. On the science side, we've got marine biology, forensics, biotech, anatomy. We've got a great summer program we started, the Tides, Time and Tides Program. We have partnerships with WPI and Syracuse University. So we truly offer such a variety and choice to our students so that they can try out different things and see what they might be more interested in. And of course, so many courses start out at the intro level and we offer them all the way up to AP. And four years ago, we started the STEM program. And I'm not, did we have the robots when you started? That was pre-robots, okay. So the first year was STEM on a shoestring. We had no funding for the course, but I said, sure, I'll give it a try. And I actually, the school did pay for me to go to a program for STEM curriculum development, which I'm still a part of. So that has been a great thing, I think, for the sixth graders. They get half-year of STEM and they get half-year of art. And all of the sixth graders know how to read, write, and program robots. Now unfortunately, I don't know if you've gone on to take any programming or robotics courses, but the classes after you all have had that opportunity. We do consistently do well, as I mentioned earlier, in MCAS and AP exams. The robotics programs are part of the curriculum as well as offered as after-school activities. And they're very popular in both the middle and the high school. And we do have the luxury of having technology available at our students' fingertips. So for teachers, we can assimilate technology as needed. And it's not a big deal, it's just commonplace, you know, something that we're used to. Tech ed is something I just wanted to mention, because in eighth grade, all of the kids take a half-year of tech ed. And my own kids loved it. You know, you'd certainly do bridge-building technology, but also woodworking. And ten years later, my daughter will not let me throw away her wooden car that she meticulously sanded and sanded it, and she's so proud of it. So I've only heard wonderful things from that program. And not all schools offer that, you know, for a full half-year to their students. So I think we're doing a very nice job with a lot of the offerings.
I'm just going to talk briefly about what the committee recommendations were. At the elementary level, looking at unpacking the new standards, these are a big shift for elementary teachers. And just looking closely at what the standards are and what grade levels they're going to be. And trying to design more inquiry-based learning along with those new standards and then also pulling in some engineering for the second, sorry, for the elementary school.
Do you mind if I just asked a quick question?
Sure.
So you worked on that over the summer and that was one of the things. I just love your perspective, how did it go? Like, was there consensus? Because I imagine it's a shifting, shifting sand a bit. But I'm just curious what your, how, when, what your impressions were and how confident you are about us being on.
I'll turn this over to Reece.
Yes, it went well. It was, it's a short time to make the kind of shift that this particular set of standards required. So we ended up narrowing the focus to the physical science strand. And our plan was to tackle the earth science and life science going into next year and the year after so that students and teachers would be shifting one strand at a time and focusing on developing high-quality lessons for each of those. We're going to be able to step that process up now because we're going to have the help of a program. And that's already aligned. So we're not going to be catching lessons and searching the internet and all of that and having to vet the things that the teachers come up with. So the work was very productive, it was very eye-opening. In some cases, and in others, we had done work the summer prior as well, just digging into the NGSS standards, because we knew that those were probably going to inform the new Massachusetts standards. And so that work was a small committee of teachers that kind of peeked into it already and had been talking at grade-level meetings about what this is probably going to look like and what it's going to mean for us. So last summer wasn't, it wasn't new in the sense that they've seen it coming and had, you know, opportunities to look at the documents. And then we've spent professional development time this year as well, going further into it and really discussing it. So I think it's going, I think it's going well and, you know, I think we'll be doing well next year to have sort of a jump on it.
Right, so that, part of that was selecting new materials and trying to decide what the transition plan is, and thank you for clarifying that. In the, on the secondary level, our biggest challenge was at the middle school, because we had a very mixed model. We had some what they call silo classes, which is all one discipline. And we had some integrated grades. So life science was seventh grade and sixth and eighth was sort of an integr, sort of a mixed-integrated model. And we spent a lot of time looking at that and trying to decide what the research stated was the best practice for students and looking at the way that the middle, or the elementary schools was approaching it and what would be the best for them going into high school. And so the middle schools has chosen to follow the state recommendation of an integrated model at each grade level, which means each grade has a theme to base all of their work around. But they're doing a little bit of life science, a little bit of earth and space science, a little bit of physical science. And each year builds and continues to go along with the developmental level of students. And so by the time they're ready for high school, they will have had a great exposure to all the sciences and will be prepared to go on there. So that was our biggest challenge. We're, we're looking at and have decided on some materials for that. The high school, primarily it's trying to integrate the science practices, which our teachers have already been doing many of all along. We have some, you know, the teachers are doing a great job with that. Our next challenge is with the biology, getting materials and getting the course up to the standards of the new 2016 standards and see what the test is going to be like. But, and then professional development for teachers to just feel comfortable with bringing more inquiry in and trying to develop more of the science practices as a daily part of their lessons. That's it, yeah.
So we're right near the end. And so let's talk a little bit about the action steps so far, which mirror pretty much, we highlighted the recommendations that are the ones that we've acted on the most so far. At the elementary level, we have done, as we said, the unpacking of the standards. We did look, as the subcommittee looked last year, at curriculum materials. We looked at many programs, they're, they're named in the report that you have. And at the elementary level, we hadn't found one in the bunch that really fit the needs we felt going forward and really in all the ways that we were looking for. This year, Pearson has just published their science program called Elevate, which is everything that we've been looking for, truthfully. So a small committee made from members of the subcommittee, but then also teachers that worked with them, vetted those materials and decided that, in fact, after they had tried and successfully put together a physical science unit for this year, but they knew the work that went into that over the summer and, as I said, trying to vet the resources, they were in pulling the materials together. They, they said, this is really going to do this for us, because it comes with kits, obviously. And then the textbook is similar to their math books at this level in the sense that it's a consumable textbook with a nice amount of text for students to digest, not overwhelming. And then there are definitely inquiry-based labs scattered throughout. And there's an online component. It'll be the same platform the kids and the teachers are used to, because it's, it's the same platform they go to for their math. And they'll just have their, science course will be in there too. It will allow them lots of opportunities for practice with the kinds of questions they'll see on the end-of-year test. It aligns to the state standards perfectly. And so we're very excited about it. You know, obviously, it will come with some professional development and we'll do our own as well. But that's, I would say, the one thing this year that has been the greatest success and relief for us is that we have found a match, we feel, for a high-quality program that will help the kids and the teachers moving forward. So that shifted our thinking a little bit about what are our next steps and what really needs to be done, because we don't need to go and create earth science and life science kits now. Now we can focus our professional development time together in collaborative discussion between the teachers in how to best apply this and how to shift to it from what we're doing now. So this spring, by this spring's test, all the students will have had the new physical science unit taught to them. And next year, it will be, every grade level will have earth, life, and physical will be aligned and ready to go forward. So we're excited about that. Some of the other things that we have done action-step-wise in response to the committee recommendations, they asked that we think about leveraging training from the summer DEF grant. And some teachers went out west to a Steve Spangler summer professional development opportunity in response to that. And we did open the Makerspace, as you know. I won't go through that again, because you all visited with us. And that, again, funded by the DEF. And we've begun a transition plan with regards to the state testing. Again, as Kathy said, you know, it's one measure, it's one task. We try not to get too excited about that, but we do have it in mind. And we did start talking about how we can get our kids ready for it. So this year's fifth-grade teachers are focused on those overlapping standards that will be tested this year and, truthfully, filling gaps. Because as districts shifted and we were focused on math and literacy, we knew we had work to do there. So they're cognizant of the standards that they have to try to hit this year to get the kids ready for the spring test. And next year, we'll be doing less backfilling, so. That's about it. Going forward, we'll be focusing on how to bring the literacy in and the science together. We are very interested in bringing a lot of the reading content, the nonfiction pieces in through our readers workshop. It's, you know, the perfect place, perfect kind of text to unpack a nonfiction text. So we're looking at how we can, you know, dovetail the two together in places too. And Chandler is also going to be using the new Elevate program, but as a developmentally appropriate for them, they're not going to purchase the workbook textbook for their students. They're going to purchase the leveled readers, because that's what makes sense for those students to unpack the nonfiction there. And they'll have the online component for the teachers with all of the, you know, PD videos and the, the program has great phenomenon videos to show the kids before you do investigations and so forth. And so we're excited about it, can you tell?
So at the secondary level, we don't, we don't, we aren't tearing down the house and starting all over again. We're doing a little bit more redecorating and a little bit of refurbishing in our, in our science home in that we, you know, the courses are very strong in their frameworks, particularly in the high school. They do a lot of the science practices already. It's being a little bit more cognizant of them and bringing to them, to the students' attention and being a little bit, making sure that all of the science practices are covered in the middle and high school. Again, our biggest challenge was to try to decide how the curriculum was going to go in the middle school. We've settled on that. Teachers are very excited about trying new things. And now that we have that direction in our materials, they are already starting to take off. So really, it's just integrating more inquiry-based, integrating the science practices, being mindful of that and making sure that we cover the new standards. And then, you know, we're, now that we've shifted our frameworks in middle and high school, we're just looking to make sure that it's a smooth transition, sixth through 12, and that the skills are built and there's not too much redundancy. And we are, it's an ongoing process, but we have all the plans in place and each month in our PD and department work, that's what we're focusing our time and energy on.
What questions and comments do you have?
That's it for us.
I had a couple of questions. You mentioned the outdoor area at Chandler, and that's a great learning opportunity for the children there. We have an outdoor area behind the school here. How is that being used and are there opportunities we're missing in utilizing that space for science learning?
I'm sure that space will be a part of the conversation as teachers start looking at what the units lay out for them in the new science program. But already, we, last week, we had a two, a team of two, three classes that were out snowshoeing.
Great.
In the, in the outdoor, and the snowshoes were part of the original grant for the story walk. You might remember the story walk out there. So they, you know, got the snowshoes out and figured out all the sizes they had and brought the kids out there, it was wonderful. We, they do a lot out there in the spring. John Donovan always takes his crew out there for fishing and pond study. And we, many, many classes go out there for walks. Some of them go out there and do like poetry or literacy. And I, and I know that the middle school teachers also bring the kids out. I'm not sure what they're doing when they go out. But it's, it's been used well and I know that there is certainly more use for it that we probably haven't uncovered yet. But it's, it's in people's minds, for sure.
I went like twenty times last year to take the environmental exam every day.
Yeah, I was going to say, the high school courses, there's several courses that, it's, it's an integrated part of their curriculum and other courses go when it's appropriate. But yes, it's, there's a, there's a deep groove in the, in the soil on the way out to the outdoor learning area.
I'm glad to hear it, because it's a resource that not all schools have.
That's right, we are so thankful to have it, yeah.
If that's great.
I think I heard you say it's good to go to school when it's snowing out. That's what I heard you say.
I think that would be what you heard.
It's New England.
I hear what I want to hear.
The other thing, I, I'm not sure I want to ask a question. It's more of an observation. A few years ago, there was some discussion about students who were very engaged in STEM classes in high school and then arrived in college and their interest waned. And the researchers discovered that in freshman year, typically, freshman year in college, students arrive and the Level 101 Biology, Chemistry, Physics tend to be huge lecture courses with a lab and a section, where, a small section where you can ask questions. And what seemed to be happening was that students were arriving at college very keen on science and, but not prepared for that type of learning environment. So, and my two children, who are now sophomore and freshman in college, have said exactly that. They feel well-prepared, because they had teachers in the high school who lectured and expected them to take notes. So even in a smaller classroom where you have 25 children or students, that format, I mean, you don't want to do it every day, but, but that format is useful for future learning. So I'm wondering if that's part of your grand scheme or whether it just happens from teacher to teacher? Does the lecture format, is that part of the pedagogy at the high school?
I know, well, I guess, in the high school, I would say absolutely. I know my course, we actually use content. So mine is taking the content and putting it to use hands-on. But I certainly know, even from my own kids' experience within the high school, that the content is enforced and, yeah.
So, you know, inquiry-based. So, you know, inquiry-based learning and what we now call phenomenon-based, where you introduce this thing that students are trying to understand and explain, is good. But in order to fill in the gaps, you really, you have to use a number of different resources. And one of those is usually, I need to give you some vocabulary and explanation. Otherwise, you know, we spent 400, 500, 600 years developing this through thousands and thousands of scientists' work, and I can't expect you to do it overnight. So I'm gonna give you, I'm filling in the backstory and then we'll go from there. So yes.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons that we were, we wanted a textbook at the elementary level in science. We haven't had a textbook in science for years at the elementary level. But students do need to learn how to use that kind of a text to glean information and to be able to respond to that, so.
Yeah.
If I could just contribute just a second to that. It would be my wish that college would modify its practices to reflect what's going on at the high school and middle school level. Because I do remember that biology lecture hall of 500 children, students, 18-year-olds, 19-year-olds. And one person standing in the front of the room with an overhead projector writing notes, you know. That was the worst course I've ever taken, ever. The lab part was great. So I'm hopeful that what we're doing at the public school level K through 12 will morph into college.
Yes, yeah. But in the interim, I think the students, I know have to tough it out through those freshman courses. And if we can give them the tools, that would be useful.
Congratulations on all the work you did last year. I read the audit. I read it when it first came out and I reread it and I thought, that is a lot of work for you to come up to par with the 2016 standards. And I heard everything tonight is, we're going for inquiry-based learning, but it's, that's to me the hardest thing because how do you do that? And you just said you have to have some of the back-to-basics, right? Because one of the criticisms was, it's a lot of defined outcomes for the kids and it should be more student-centered and really hard to do if you don't have the background for that. You know, and Rita Marie, the elementary piece, I was really interested in. And they were talking about the kits K through five and some of the teachers were a little, you know, worried about using them and were they proficient? So it sounds like you've done all the professional development for that, which, again, kudos to you. And I know that'll be ongoing. For the hands-on was the number-one recommendation, so that's great. Yeah, the grade-five MCAS data was 30% needs improvement, so you've already addressed that for going forward, which I was really impressed with hearing that. And then the eighth grade, changing at the middle school, the deficit area for MCAS was something that was learned in sixth grade and then they took the class in eighth grade. So you've hit that on the head. And the only other thing, the high school, they had talked about, there's no lab safety course, which it's gone. I think they talked about, well, it's gone over and then you kinda lose some time on that or...
So it's sort of two pieces. One has to do with the introductory science units that the science courses do, which essentially is science practices in a nutshell. And so what the new frameworks are doing and what the committee recommended is just get rid of that unit and just infuse those practices into daily life. So that, that's something that the teachers have been working on all year. Those units are gone. The lab safety practices, we are working on in the 612 Science Department to standardize those and also look at grade six through 12. What are the things that are necessary for sixth graders to understand about lab safety and build on those skills and make sure that it's something we start foundationally and work through and then we have a consistent document? So that will be finished by the end of this year.
Nice. And my only other question was on assessment. You know, the audit said it should be performance-based, which is, you know, my daughter's in biology right now and it's, it's not all that. I mean, it can't be. So just sort of, what are your thoughts on maybe a unit here? I mean, for younger kids, it can be, but for the middle school, high school, how does that, you know, having that sort of developing rubrics and having a performance-based assessment for science?
I'll jump in here, since I've taught that biology class. And it's tricky because that test in particular, I think, is not typical of all the rest of the science classes. It's volumes of material that students are expected to not only learn but understand and be able to work with. And so trying to develop performance-based assessments while still preparing them adequately for the MCAS is a monumental task. It's really difficult and we, we are always on the lookout for ways that we can do that. Some of the other science classes in the high school are physics classes, all project-based. So we're trying to bring that in to more of the non-tested classes a little bit more We're working on it.
So there's plenty of opportunity.
There is opportunity, yeah.
That's gonna be.
And then the elementary, the assessment through this program has performance-based assessments for each topic as well as other. And the other piece that's important at our level is the writing about, their writing about science. So we also value the fact that it has opportunities for students to write about what they're learning as well. But it's there along with the rubrics, so, you know, we will be doing more of that. We, I would say that most of our assessment in science at the elementary level has been performance-based and teachers have designed rubrics to grade students' work and performance on things when they do activities and so forth or projects around their topics. So there's been very little written tests taken, really, in recent years at the elementary level, so.
But I think at the high school level, it's difficult, too. And just not having had two high school students, sometimes they're reluctant for the inquiry-based. And they say, you know, well, what do you want me to do? Or my son, I know, took the physics course and he struggled with it because he wasn't used to figuring things out on his own. Now, as we continue to shift in the middle school to be even more inquiry-based, hopefully the students will be more, you know, accepting of doing that. But I do think that that's a struggle is the kids, they wanna know what to do and how to do it so that they can get the right answer. And we've gotta shift that mindset, too, to say, it's okay to make mistakes. It's okay to try different things. But that's, it's pretty high stakes in high school and, you know, the kids don't wanna make mistakes. So I think that's really something that hopefully, as we do more of it in the younger grades, the kids will get used to it and it'll be easier for them. But then again, as you said, colleges are so behind the times. Here we are, leading the way. And then we send the kids. And that's actually a good point. I don't know if in high school, we think about even having some type of college prep for like, like, science classes in college because it is really difficult for the kids, you know, especially note-taking.
And apparently, it's just that first year, that additional Level One or Level 101 and whatever the basic sciences. Once you get beyond that, most colleges, their smaller seminar courses and labs and things. You get much more interaction with professors and scientists and all that. But it's some way to just get them over that hurdle of the initial classes to retain their interest in the field. That's important.
Yeah, I agree.
I had a question. So, you know, one of the things, and I'm a little resource-focused currently with discussions that are ongoing. But, you know, in a sense, and I'm gonna make a comment and I'm gonna ask a question. But in a sense, I don't really view this process as curriculum review strictly because I think it's an opportunity every five years for us to self-assess and to envision what we could be in the future. And my question for you is, Mr. Farmer and Dr. Antonucci were not here last year. What directive guidance did you have to contemplate resources as part of the curriculum review process? And, because what we wanna do is start reflecting what the vision is for performance improvement, if you call it that. Performance assessment, like you're being scored. But how could we enhance the experience of our students? What are the best ways in which we can accomplish that? Could be class size, it could be class structure, it could be supporting materials, it could be professional development. There's a whole spectrum that's much more broad than curriculum. What resources do we need to be able to implement all some or a portion and some, you know, kind of hierarchy of priorities? What's the biggest benefit we can get for a given expenditure of resources? So I'm just curious, could you tell me, what guidance did you have when you were looking at this to think about in the context of what could we do and what resources would be required to get us there? What guidance did you get?
Well, we, under the curriculum review cycle, we had been in the practice of, when we came to that year, that was the develop year, I believe, in the cycle, that really there was this sort of notion of a monetary attachment to a particular phase in the cycle, that there might be a need for resources, for textbooks, if that's what's, you know, not aligned or, as you said, you know, whatever the resources might be. It has typically been curriculum resources in the form of textbooks or programs or, yeah, for the most part, that's what it's been, at least at the elementary level as we've moved through the different. So we, we knew that there would be some ability to leverage some funding to get textbooks was pretty much the guidance we were given. Although, we also had talked last year about the fact that if what we're looking for really isn't out there, we weren't about spending the money last year for it because we wanted to get high quality. So we did put it off. We deliberately decided that we would use our internal resources and look at how we could move materials grade level to grade level with what we have and then see what gaps we identified. And sure enough, the gaps that came to the surface were just too great to be able, we would be spending the same plus all kinds of man-hours to make it work. So that's how we ended up where we are at the elementary level.
Okay, good. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and really thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Donovan, Mr. Holgate, are you gonna join us? Great, thank you.
I guess we're mentioning that this is Jim's first appearance here as the official principal of Dr. Ray High School.
And Tommy.
Yeah. No applause. It's a given.
Good evening. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight and Mr. Holgate's here as well. Just to talk a little bit about health, the health rollout. We don't have any great slides like, you know, the science people have. But we have rolled out the 10th-grade health curriculum this year. As I wrote here, we've had a couple bumps along the way, mainly with room utilization. And as we look towards the school committee requirement to add the 11th, 12th grade course for next year, we've run into some real operational roadblocks. The biggest roadblock we have is space. The classroom component of the course, well, our building was not built with PE classroom space incorporated into it. And so we have been able to accommodate the 10th-grade space by putting health classes all throughout the building and kind of, you know, they're in a foods class one period, they're in a science class another period where there's some room availability. But room availability's not consistent throughout the day and it has not met the actual occurrence times of when these classes are meeting. So we can, we've, with Mr. Holgate and Mrs. DeBows, I can think we can schedule 10th-grade health better. We see a real logistical issue for adding an 11th-grade class. We don't know really where to put it. We have, and so we're coming this evening to ask for some consideration from the school committee to postpone that requirement for 11th and 12th grade health course from the class of 2020 to the class of 2021, to give us some more time to figure out how to operationalize the content of that course and how we can fit it into the, just the space of the building, the classroom space. We've run into some classroom size, so as the schedule's built and as we put the classes where they're best for most students, we've run into some classroom density things where we have classrooms of, or classes of 30 or 35 kids and we can't, we don't have a classroom for 35 kids. So what we've been using is the breadboard area and the cafeteria. The cafeteria, because they have tables and they have space, but we can really only use those buildings, those areas during blocks one through three because of lunches in period four and then just to kind of clean up and break down of the day during lunch, during last period. So there's limits to, to that environment. The health teachers, the physical education, a lot of the teachers have done a really great job this year. They've rolled out the whole new course. They're, Tom can speak more specifically to the parts of it. They're in their second round of it now in the spring semester. We've gotten some, because we've got some good feedback on it, we've got some good support from the community, the FACS group, and their PTO has provided us with some materials. And our teachers have been doing, have been doing a really good job. We just, we think we need a little more time to figure out how to, how to make that next part of the policy that was adopted last year, to figure out how to make it work within our schedule and not without creating more problems than we can really manage. And the biggest issue right now is space.
Well, our space isn't getting any bigger, so.
Yeah.
How do you see that playing out? And our students aren't getting any fewer over the next year or so.
And the need that the committee identified last year for our content is still there, is still present, and it's not gonna go away.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I could talk on it. I mean, that was our biggest worry is that when they put this schedule together, I mean, we have a class of over 40 students. And attempting to actually teach them a health curriculum to a 10th grader is interesting in the least any way. I still laugh about the ninth-grade class that we run that does not have a classroom and people walking by the breadboard while we're going over human sexuality because we simply don't have the space to put them anywhere. I've walked into the weight room and watched one of the teachers actually teaching a health unit there because that simply was the only space available.
Yeah.
And so that's one of the issues that we have going forward is that we're trying to run classroom-based classes without classrooms. And so your handicap, I mean, some of these class sizes are handicapped teachers already. And then to then not give them an actual teaching space that doesn't have the technology that we have. They'll use the library conference room. Library conference room might be the furthest away of any other classroom space to the high school. So these handicaps are being thrown at them. And we're foreseeing what, I mean, what Jim already talked about, when our 10th grade's already running into issues, can you imagine if we tried to roll out an 11th and a 12th grade class that is essentially all classroom-based? And again, a lot of this is just when you make up the schedule, I mean, I don't think I'm telling anyone anything you don't know, health is not the first class that you're going to fit in. You're gonna fit in your cores and then we sort of fit in where else you can. And so when you have that issue, there are certain courses, there are certain grades that fit in in certain places, and it sort of leaves us as sort of the second or third when you're filling in. And I don't have any issue with that. Obviously, English, math, and our other core courses are going to be the brunt of where we try to figure out space.
Sure. But how will the, how will time help you guys?
So, so, if I can just add one thing to your question before. So we can do a better job next year of dedicating space in the building and making that a primary teaching place for health, for the health and wellness courses. The decision was made that we could kind of find space because the need is not consistent. So the, in a 10th-grade class there, they need classroom spot for 30 or 40% of the course, not the whole course. So what we did was we decided not to assign them a classroom space all the time because it was only being needed 30 or 40% of the time. We can schedule differently and the reality is, we, between ninth and 10th grade, it's just, there's something happening almost all the time. So we can dedicate a classroom or two and have that become the physical education wellness classrooms. That has other scheduling implications for room utilization, but we can, we can absorb that within the schedule. The, the content part of it, to your question, is what we have to grapple with. Where do we, where do we introduce that content that was dedicated, set out in the 11th-grade course, 11th and 12th grade course? Where do we either get it into the ninth and 10th grade course? Or how do we look at how physical education, our graduation requirements or other course load to create more space in which we can do it? And we need a little bit more time to figure that, figure that part of it out. We could, we could move forward next year with the 11th and 12th grade course. What we'd have to do is limit access of students to PE beyond the graduation requirement, which is... which is a huge...
That would be a task unto itself.
And what that does is it moves kids from there to someplace else, and we're not quite sure exactly where that other place is within our schedule, so, and within our building. So we, that's where you need a little bit more time to, to come up with a, a solution that respects the work that the committee did and our curriculum needs, but also some of our kind of operational realities within the building.
Yeah.
I'm not understanding how they're taking it. Like, I thought it was part of PE.
It is part of PE, but what...
Sorry, do you want, the, the new, what there basically is now is we have a 9th grade introductory class, introduction to PE. We now have a 10th grade, which we'll call the wellness class. We're doing that right now, and then they essentially have to take at least two more PE wellness classes before they graduate. What is happening, which Jim started to talk about, is we have seniors that are in their seventh or eighth PE class, and if we simply put them somewhere else, it could create a numbers issue. It's a question of where are they going to go?
So they can't just, they're not taking it, like, I think in 9th grade, they did that work in the bleachers during PE?
Yeah. So what we're trying to do now...
So if they're in PE, why is that, why can't they be doing it there?
So we're trying not to do it that way. So what we're trying to do is when the students are in the classroom, parts of 9th grade health and the 10th grade wellness course, that they're outside of the gym, because we schedule all of our PE classes on top of each other. So we have in every period a sports strength course, we have two or, two or three team sports classes, we will have a project adventure sometimes in the middle school, we have all the middle school PE classes, and then we run a 9th or 10th grade wellness course at the, in the same, in the gym at the same time. And so what we're doing is we're shifting, we're shifting, our, our PE teachers are amazing, they're able to figure out how to kind of move through the spaces seasonally, when the units fit, when everyone's inside, we tend to do more classroom stuff when they're outside. The 9th grade, you know, entered PE class gets to use the strength and conditioning room and the wellness, the middle school wellness room, because those, those classes are outside doing other things. And so they have kind of got a, a routine that they've, they've managed to manage the space, but we're trying not to do it while volleyball's going on. We're trying to move that stuff out.
I mean, the majority of the stuff is not stuff you'd want to be doing on the bleachers. I mean, it's classroom-based.
So it's a section, but they're scheduled, it's a PE wellness class, so they might be...
Yes, the 9th and the 10th grade is set up that way.
Okay.
So when you're in 9th grade, yes, you'll be doing some PE units, you'll also do some health units, and we sort of interchange between the two. It's an introduction to everything, they'll do an introduction to the project adventure, and then when they go to 10th grade, there's aerobics, we, as if they do social, emotional, health, nutrition, substance abuse. We actually are getting everyone CPR certified, which is something that we brought in, and that link was actually with the 11th and 12th to get them after two years certified again.
Stereo, really stereo.
Yes, great. And I, we actually, they brought in something on distracting driving and actually melanoma. So these are things that they're bringing in. And a lot of what 11th and 12th grade are set up for the, the template that we set up, a lot of this is boosters, is doing stuff again, like, hey, you know, you did a substance abuse unit two years ago, let's get things that are a little bit more up to someone that's on their way to college. And that's the issue that we're having is that, and again, just imagine trying to teach this in the breadboard area where people walking by back and forth the entire time. And so these are sort of the handicaps that we've been running into, that we're basically here now saying we need to kind of get 10th grade, the 9th and 10th grade class into a set pattern before we really jump into this 11th and 12th grade class.
So it sounds like you need to both be really disciplined with the unit planning and have a classroom for, to revolve around those units.
Right.
So right now, the, the 9th graders are gonna be, you know, first period, second period, third period, need a classroom, you know, the other kids are doing something physical or outside.
Right, and you, and you can think of the 9th and 10th doing the units where one is doing a PE unit while the other is doing a health unit, and then they mix and match, let's say it's a two-week unit, something like that. I mean, nothing is perfect, but at least in theory you have that going on.
So you just need a dedicated space. Good luck.
We do, we can, we can make that, no, we, we can make that happen.
Okay.
What about the DSU?
I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know how feasible that is, just in the time.
The, the worry with DSU is, like, let's look at today, like, going to the DSU to take a sit-down class.
And I think, you know, we heard earlier, like, the seniors are being fitted for graduation. The, the trick is, it's currently a graduation requirement for the class of 2020.
Correct.
Which means they have to be running a program next September that we're not ready to run.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, obviously the spirit is willing to do this, and the commitment, it's just we're not quite ready, and it sounds like we need an extra year. And I wanted to ask, does any of the anticipated schedule changes require negotiation with the, the teachers' union to get their consent, or is this just more logistics?
No, so the, the schedule changes would be a, it wouldn't change the contractual day or make any, it changes that. And PE is, actually has a, a different, in the contract, there's a different student cap.
Okay.
So they're not subject to the same 120 student cap.
So you just need the time, you think, next year to really figure out the logistics?
Right, and it's basically trying to figure out, and we, a few of the teachers have already come up trying to spitball a few ideas that we know what we want to teach, it's how can we put this out there for them to teach? And again, if you're aware of what the health and PE standards are, that's 1999 when they came out, so a lot of this we are actually bringing into this century.
Yeah.
Because if you read that document, it's a little...
Passive.
And our, our teachers have done, have done a remarkable job. I mean, they've built it from, 10th grade had nothing, except for the work the committee had done over the last year, and we're very appreciative for their work.
Right. I think that, under, behind the questioning, I think from us, is that there seemed to be a high priority put on rolling, putting this curriculum together, rolling it out, and there were a number of voices in the community saying how important it was. So we want to make sure that...
Yeah.
Giving you the time actually gives you the opportunity to, to put it in place for next year, that there are some obstacles that even time is not gonna allow you to overcome.
So my answer to that would be the, the, the committee, members certainly of the town, boards in the town, I mean, this is a, this, creating this graduation requirement was a, was a real community event in response to our, our current reality, the, the needs of our students at this time. We want to find a way to respect that. We are struggling right now in how to operationalize that, and we think with a little more time we can come up with a solution, and then we will, we will be back here with that and getting feedback and going through that process. We're not, we're not trying to get rid of the curriculum in any way, we're just trying to figure out how to, how to, how to fit it in our current reality for space, our current reality for our graduation requirements for PE, what our students take, you know? We went from really a one-year wellness requirement to a three-year wellness requirement in a year.
Can I jump in though? Because Julie, I don't, I don't wanna make any promises we can't keep, but I will say, and Jim and I have had lengthy conversations about this recently, but, you know, at some point, you know, in Dexter High School alone, you added, 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 at some point, we might need to have serious conversations, not just about health, but about our graduation requirement, requirements.
Yeah.
And we kind of have to start walking the walk a little bit, where we talk about kids being overscheduled, we talk about the inflexibility of our, our own schedule, social and emotional issues, all these things. And so at some point, you know, I say to Jim, we might have to rethink what we're requiring of ourselves and what we're requiring of our students. It's not just health, that, that's what kind of complicates it for me.
And where the priorities are.
You're right, and so...
That's, that's my, my issue here.
And I also think there are some ways to, to kind of deliver content that just looks a little different than what we're used to. And I gave an example in my former district where we allowed students who participated in extracurricular activities, dance, sports, what have you, who, you know, some of these kids are doing it six days a week, we sort of allowed them to count that towards their, right, so, and not, not to say that's the answer, I'm just saying, like, something's gotta give some, at some point with our schedule. It's really hard for these guys to manage, you know, and it's hard for our kids to manage. So anyway, I don't mean to get off on a tangent, but it's important.
We have a one-to-one laptop program, you could do flipped instruction on some of the units, and I'm sure, you know, you guys know better than I do about the potential for that. So there are ways and means, but it just seemed that there's such a strong kind of support for the program.
Yeah.
In the community, we don't want to disappoint people.
No, not at all, no.
Just food for thought, if, you know, if we're gonna put off the formal implementation, is, is there a way to look at kind of what the priorities were for the 11th and 12th graders and trying to just continue to keep that on the radar screen in other ways?
Well, the big thing, I think, with substance abuse, to be honest, and that is a big part of the 10th grade wellness class that we have, and then we are essentially going to also have a second...
Follow-up programs.
Yes, exactly.
But maybe for the juniors and seniors have, you know, another, like, a speaker in the fall and a speaker in the spring type thing, so you just keep it on the radar screen, and also I think stress management was a part of it, too.
Yeah, and that was actually what we have in our 12th grade, the stress reduction techniques, and...
So maybe not a full course, but maybe just giving them something?
Right, and that's where our school psychologists have actually worked with the PE department and come in with some things that we've used, actually with the younger kids. The idea was, a lot of this was, they use the word boosters as in, you know, we've gone over this once, now let's give you some new techniques or...
Yeah, I, I think, I think maybe having some kind of plan like that in place so we can show the community, because this was, has been an important initiative for several years, and then, you know...
I can, I can do that, and I can come back to you with, with, with Mr. Holgate and to hit some of those things to make sure we incorporate them.
You just say, we're still hitting on these things, we still recognize it, we just need, like you said, to operationalize it, we need a little more time, just to show.
We can do that.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Do we want to, do we want to take a vote on this?
I think so.
So is there a consensus or we're ready to take a vote? And then we can ask Mr. Donovan, maybe you could come back and give us an update on what you think you would do as a kind of interim step for 11th and 12th graders?
Certainly.
Sure.
What do people feel about that?
Can we do that in the absence of having the policy in front of us? Do we need to have...
Well, I think we'd be making a motion to move the graduation requirement to 20, class of 2021 versus a class of 2020. I think that's pretty much what your letter was recommending for us. So that's what we'd be voting on.
Fine, yeah, okay.
Do we have a motion to move the graduation requirement to class of 2021?
Motion to move the health and wellness graduation requirement to the class of 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you've got, you heard from everyone our support for the initiative, so let us do, let us know if there's anything we can do to help.
I'll, I'll sort of have time, work with the team, come up with some stuff, and then I'll come back for sure in the spring, later in the spring.
Yeah, and, and you mentioned in your letter, there may be a possible increase at FTE, so we'd want to hear about that as part of that.
Yep, and so that really is, as, as John said before, if, we have a lot of students who use our PE courses for their own personal wellness in ways other than this, and so if we want to maintain those programs while adding programs, programming requirements, you know, right now, the only way to do it would be to really limit access to students significantly to meet the needs of that requirement, which changes that whole kind of PE paradigm. So I would certainly come back with more information about what that would look like, or what we, what we project that, that may look like.
Yeah.
We lost our students, but if we ask them, some of the things that they look forward to most every day are, are PE classes.
Right, and again, it's, it's a stress reliever, it's something where they know at the end of class, they've completed the class, they're not worried about what they have over their heads for that class. And that's the reason a lot of them are involved, especially, you know, our kids are taking the four or five APs, I think that is the stress reliever for them.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Perfect, great, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Jim, are you here? Yeah, we're kind of running behind. You want to give a two, two-second update on the times and tides?
Absolutely, so we're gonna introduce in the program of studies course, a, a modified, very modified plan for a time and tides like course. It's, we've been meeting with, Mr. Farmer and I have been meeting with the group of teachers that led that program over the last couple of years, and we've brought up that idea, which we're gonna move forward with, which is basically a two-period class, we're hoping for the springs, for the spring semester, that students could take, would be back-to-back classes, which allows kids to be able to get out a little bit into the community, and with a focus more on stewardship. So it's, we have our senior service project program, which is seniors can prepare a project and work all year, and then spend the fourth quarter out in the community doing that project. So our, our hope is that the, this kind of time and tides program, we're keeping the name, would focus really on the stewardship goal, so that as a class, they would meet beginning of the second semester, kind of do some research in the community, figure out how they can help as a group, and then spend that spring semester, the seniors who were in that class, be able to get out into the community and actually execute the service project. We're looking for it to be a junior and senior class, it's the way we're gonna present it in the program of studies, and we're gonna kick the tires and see how it goes. So we're hoping to get some kids to sign up, we think there's some room in the, we think that some kids will make that choice and, and give it a shot. And so we'll know in, in early March, they're gonna come to, the time and tides group is gonna come and do a presentation at, of course, selection night, which is March 1st, and they're gonna make a presentation appearance that evening, and then make subsequent presentations, and we'll see how we do. But we're gonna try to add, you know, the, the, I respect the work that the committee, that group of teachers has done, they've done, they've done a lot of wonderful work, and we're gonna try what we can, what we think will give us a foot in the door and give us an opportunity to grow, because as, as I said before, we continue to, to add opportunities, and our program of studies has a ton of different courses in there. And so, you know, we're gonna see, we're gonna see what we can do.
Great.
Give it a shot.
Super.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, thank you both.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You'd answered that, I think, that's fine.
Pardon me?
You'd answered my question.
Okay.
I had asked you to update.
Okay.
Good enough for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we switch orders here a little bit and go into the school-based advertising and the school-sponsored field trips?
Yeah, I think so. Sorry, Jim.
Thank you.
So we... Do you want me to kick this off? So school, so we had talked a couple of times about the idea of, you know, possibly revising our, our policy around advertising, whether or not we should allow advertising in the Dexter High Public Schools. We, I think we came to a consensus that we were open to the idea, but also, I guess, that if we were going to do it, that it should directly benefit the Dexter High Public Schools. So after the last meeting, you kind of sent us off to our, our small policy liaison group, and we met, did we meet twice or once? I can't remember now. Once, but, so we've drafted for you, actually, thanks to Matt, who was sort of the, the main drafter, and we evaluated a lot of different policies from other districts, we looked at sample model policies from mass association of school committees and our own policy, we did a lot of review, and we came up with this draft, which is, I, I think, pretty clear, pretty direct, and I think covers a lot of the territory that needs to be covered. So the big picture is, are we still interested in, in allowing it, and have we hit all, have we hit all the main points?
Well, the, the only thing I could think of that was missing was who gets to determine how the funds are dispersed? Because my, I read it and I thought, this is great, but then I could foresee schools competing for the funding or activities competing for the funding, and so how would we kind of set it out right at the beginning? Who's, who's, or how the funds are gonna be divvied up fairly?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, I, I really haven't considered that, I, I just would assume that we would, that we would control it just like we control the rest of the budget, period. I mean, it was, I would never kind of give up that, that discretion. I don't know how to articulate that, though, so something I think about.
So, yeah, so I thought, well, okay, if we have a bunch of banners over on the turf at the high school, you could have the high school claiming all that revenue, because it's their turf, right? But of course, it's not, it's for the whole school system, so I think it's just a matter of articulating who's gonna...
I think it has to go into essentially, not that we use this term, but like the district pool, not pool, swing pool, uh, pool of funds. And I think we would use it just like we use all our other funds, you know, use it at our discretion, use it to offset certain activities, I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
Well, you have designated for school-sponsored extracurricular initiatives.
Yeah, so that was a specific, so that was a specific, again, that's something that we, we put in the draft, that's not necessarily the end-all, be-all. But I would just say, generally speaking, I, not to, not to put it in the same category as user fees, but as you, as really as extracurriculars, if we're raising it, we're not nearly, well, we need subsidies, I guess, right? Nothing we would raise would ever be enough to fully fund a program. So everything would just be a budget offset, I think, I think.
Yeah, because I think we made it clear that it wouldn't be a replacement for operational costs.
Definitely not, that's in there, that's in there.
Yeah. But I wondered if the other school districts that, whose policies you reviewed had any kind of wording.
They didn't go into that. And I was assuming, because, I mean, I'm assuming that they don't go into that, because my assumption is that this isn't written so much for, to me, like, the internal audience is the secondary audience.
Right, sure.
And the primary audience is like the person who came to us last month or so with that request, which inspired us to write this in the first place. So it's kind of like not any of their concern.
Yeah, that's true.
You, you know how it gets divvied up from school to school. It's for the district to sponsor extracurricular activities, period.
Yeah.
So I would, I would leave it out.
Okay.
And because it's really, I think, at your discretion, how it gets, our discretion is how it gets dispersed from school to school.
Okay. Okay. Good.
Similar question, different vein. Who's making this decision about what's respectfully and tastefully advertising and who has the decision, yea or nay, on the advertising? Do we need to call that out?
I think the, I think the policy puts it in the superintendent's purview. So the final, you know, the.
The second paragraph.
Second paragraph, first sentence, superintendent of schools must provide advance written approvals, right? So I think it's basically me. I mean, I guess I would say, from a technical, to answer your question, technically, I would say it's the superintendent. I'd say, in reality, I know I can only speak for myself, but I would never make these approvals in a vacuum. So, I mean, it's, you know, yeah, no, but I, if, but it's a good question, I can only speak for myself, so we're trying to develop a policy for future boards and also future administrations. So I don't know if we should be more clear or not.
For what it's worth, not every district that I researched had that sort of language in it, in terms of like appropriateness and inappropriateness.
Yeah.
I thought it was helpful to put it in, just to set some sort of, some ground rules. And I think maybe in my first cut at it, I put a little note saying that we could, could leave this out if we don't want to get sort of down a rattle, but.
Well, I think it's worth setting out there. Because if you don't set it out there and then somebody comes forward with.
Lucky strikes.
A message you don't prove of, then, you know, then they could say, well, you're discriminating or something. Whereas here, you've set it out, look, we're a school, we're only prepared to tolerate certain things.
Yeah, and I think, you know, my advice would be to, because the school committee is really a policy, not an operations board, you know, that we specify, the superintendent solely has responsibility for determination of what advertising is suitable, what the pricing is and how the funds are used. But he shall provide, you know, advice to the school committee on, on what's being done, or something like, I was good on the first part, but then the last, the last part is just to give the school committee a heads up what's being done.
Yeah.
So if we're asked by a member of the community, we can be very clear and say, school committee was advised, but it's a superintendent's responsibility to make a determination.
And I think that was the second.
That's kind of implied.
Yeah, it's implied. That, that was kind of my, the superintendent of schools must provide advance written approval. That doesn't necessarily mean the superintendent's making the decision. So I think having a little bit more clarity.
Exactly, just to clarify, yeah, just so it's, so we don't create confusion in the future.
Because we've run, we've run into that with other policies, where they run it up the chain, you know, and it's not clear where the chain ends and then we end up having a meeting about it.
You know, we could add something, I mean, I have to think about it, but, you know, so superintendent can approve, but if you're interested, superintendent can also, in the policy can be, must, should also notify the school committee of any, of any approved advertising. I mean, it's just a notification.
Yeah, notification, yeah, that's fine.
Notification.
And then that's easy for us to answer the question when we're asked, well, who decided it was okay to have whatever advertisement, you know, goes up in the future?
The only, the, respectfully and the tastefully advertised, just the lawyer and me, if there ever does become a situation, and it's hard to see this, where we say yes to one group and we say no to the other group and it becomes an issue, those, that's the kind of language that people can get their hooks into. So that's why I was saying, who's making that decision? If it's respectful for you versus respectful for me, or what's tasteful for you might not be tasteful for me. So that's.
Do you want to get rid of that to respectfully and tastefully? In that sentence?
Yeah, I mean, it's your decision, period.
And just to say to advertise?
Yeah.
Yeah, so may, may permit certain regions businesses to advertise.
Yeah. It's a judgment call.
You're right.
And it's just yes or no.
The other, you know, the other question I have not to go, well, to, to go back to it is, do we want to just, do we want to keep extracurricular in or do you want, do you want to keep it school-sponsored initiatives?
Extracurricular.
You rather, yeah.
Because otherwise, you're going to have people suggesting this should go into the operating.
Yeah, fundraise for foreign language or something, yeah.
And all these funds are going to come from extracurricular, like, locations, as far as I'm thinking of it, right? I mean, for the most part.
Maybe, maybe not. I mean, it could be, well, it depends what's extracurricular. I mean, we're not looking to put up a billboard, you know.
In the school.
But it could be, I mean, I'm projecting something that's probably not going to happen, but we could ultimately name, have a naming rights or, and this is advertising, really, this isn't so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could advertise in the auditorium or cafeteria.
Okay.
No, but I'm saying, but that's, that's the kind of things you have to, have to talk about.
Yeah.
All right, we'll do, we'll do another draft.
Oh, you find advertising distasteful.
Thank you, thank you for.
Oh, you're welcome. No problem.
Do we want to move on to discuss the much more substantial, complicated foreign travel?
Yeah, well, yeah, so I don't, I don't know that tonight's the night to really get into a long conversation about it. I just would say, in your packet, unless you want to answer some questions, it's a pretty dense.
Well, so, yeah, my only, my only advice, it was, it was a policy that seemed to cross over to prescription, like you need to do the following five steps if you're going to have, I like the idea and the lawyer's advice of having a policy that allows for both school-sponsored and private-sponsored trips. I think that's good because it preserves flexibility. But then what I didn't like was the policies were so prescriptive of what we need to do in every one of those cases. And to me, that got into too much detail.
Procedure versus policy.
Yeah, exactly. That was my only reaction.
Yeah, that was honestly, it was just a model. She just, she said, here's, here's one that we, here's one that we have seen, we've worked, I forget what district it came from.
South Berkshire or something.
Yeah, because there's a typo in there, right? But it's, we can, I, I think the important part now really is determining whether or not we want to actually sponsor school trips or not. To me, that's the, and then we can get into the weeds, I think, on the, on the policy.
Yeah, and I think, can I, I don't want to go into a big discussion either, because I know we want to get to the other, to the members. I will just, I want to put that out there for consideration, that the second paragraph in their letter, "In our opinion, school-sponsored field trips can often be preferable to privately-sponsored field trips, as school-sponsored trips give school districts better control and oversight. And the risk of litigation related to such field trips is relatively similar, regardless of whether a trip is sponsored by a school or private entity." Okay? So the risk is similar. However, we must caution that school districts' ultimate liability may be reduced in relation to privately-sponsored trips. So the same, same risk of litigation.
Risk of losing.
Less liability for a private.
Right.
But then, and then they go through it and when, and then they're, they go through a couple of things that you can do in terms of doing the background checks, which we have to do on our employees anyways. But they say, based on the foregoing, be in a better position to ensure safety and security. We recommend adopt a policy that allows us to conduct school-sponsored extended international trips. So I think it's, I don't know, when I started reading it, it didn't end where I expected to. So I would just, I think it's a good idea for all of us to read through it a couple of times.
You, yeah, this whole thing to me is about what, what do you prioritize, right? So maybe there's less li, I mean, I've talked to several conversations about it, but, you know, may, maybe there's less liability, right? Because you have this slight separation, which you also said, you know, quote, you're going to get sued anyway.
Right, same risk of litigation.
And you're trading, what's that?
Same risk of litigation.
Right, right.
You're going to get sued anyway.
So you're, so you're trading, you're trading that little sliver of maybe less liability for less control, right? And that's what we have to ask ourselves, is do we, do we want to be able to control kind of the parameters and the protocols on these trips? I mean, it's, I get very nervous when we send kids overseas. I'd much rather, I'd much rather control, personally. But it's, it is a trade-off and it's working fine now, but it's a real slippery slope, you know? And I give you an example, too, of how kind of gray it is right now, is, you know, we, we say they're not school sanctioned, yet most of our trips, kids will have an excused absence on the Friday before the trip to go on the, the non-school sanctioned trip, right? And so she, she pushed me on that to say, is that happening? I'm like, well, it is happening, right? So I don't know if they're really not, the way we're currently running them, you know, what we say there and what they really are, I think are two different things. I don't know. But again.
No, that, that's true. Because when Rufus went to Germany, they left on a Thursday afternoon from school.
Right. And it's excused absence and our staff is, and our staff is taking time, you know, time. So I mean, it's real, real gray.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll table it for now and we'll come back to it in the future.
I would ask, so if you have specific questions, you know, I, I ask them and we can refer, refer them to, I really can't pretend to understand that, the lawyer's world.
Yeah.
Do we need to approve, speaking of trips, do we need to approve this before we get into the budget?
Sure, yeah, let's, why don't we go ahead and do that? Is there any discussion, it's super exciting that they're going to go to the Nationals in Detroit.
Hold on a second, maybe. So I, I need to be clear about this. So this is a, this is a contingency approval.
Right, okay.
So two weeks, we won't know until two weeks prior.
Right.
To this trip, if they, if they advance.
Right.
But they're, they're having to, as you can, you know, they, they found a sponsor, which is awesome, they're having to fundraise, they're having to really prepare. And so I didn't want to send them, set them on any further until they get approval that we'd actually let them go. I think it's a no-brainer. I mean, I think it's a wonderful, be incredible opportunity. So it is a contingency approval, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, any discussion on that? Do we have a motion to conditionally approve the requested trip for the robotics team if they qualify?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, conditionally approve the proposed trip to the robotics tournament in Detroit in April.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. I have some notes here I wanted to share. I've, I've kind of written my remarks, so I, so I would just be, you know, very clear and, and consistent. So if you just bear with me, it's not something I typically do, as you know, I like to speak from the, the hip. I wanted to provide you with an update on discussions with town officials related to the budgeting process and also the status of budget discussions for fiscal 19 as a follow-up to our December 20th and January 17th school committee meetings. At our December 20th meeting, after a thorough discussion and deliberation, the school committee voted to approve a fiscal 19 recommended budget for the Duxbury Public Schools of This budget recommendation was Dr. Antonucci's level service budget request plus an additional amount of 174K for hiring teachers to mitigate class size overcrowding, particularly in the Duxbury Middle School. The finance committee and town manager have presented to the selectmen a recommended budget for the schools of $35,594,050 or $296,350 lower than the school committee recommended budget. Between December 20th and today, Dr. Antonucci, David Pearl, and I have had multiple meetings and communications with Duxbury's town manager, finance director, and finance committee chair, with the objective to try to narrow the gap between the December 20th school committee vote and the town manager and finance committee, bottom line, fiscal 19 recommended budget of $35,594. Unfortunately, we've not made progress in these discussions and the gap still remains of $296,000 between the school committee proposed fiscal 19 budget voted December 20th and the town manager and FinCom, FinCom recommended fiscal 19 school budget. Of course, it's disappointing that we haven't made progress, but we haven't given up. But what I would like to suggest is, it's my recommendation that the school committee and Dr. Antonucci present our recommended fiscal 19 budget to the residents of Duxbury at the March 10th, 2018 annual town, town meeting and let the voters of the town decide on the final school budget for fiscal 19. Whether ultimately the residents of Duxbury support the school committee recommended budget or the budget recommended by the town manager and the finance committee, this will provide the school committee an opportunity to outline why we believe the budget that we have proposed for fiscal 19 is a reasonable and thoughtful budget for the schools and an affordable school operating budget for the town of Duxbury. We'll also have the opportunity to illustrate at town meeting that the school committee recommended budget for fiscal 19 is consistent with the operating budget increases that the town has supported for the schools over the past five years. I also believe it will be important to work on improvements to the budgeting process after the fiscal 19 budget is finalized. My goal is that the input of the school committee superintendent and school business manager is sought and overall town financial obligations and historical trends are made clear in advance of developing high-level budget assumptions, which will be the foundation for the fiscal 20 budget and future town of Duxbury budgets. We welcome, and certainly I can, I think I can speak for the school committee as a whole, that we welcome the opportunity to be more actively engaged in this process in fiscal 20. I just wanted to add a couple of points. I think we got off to the wrong foot right out of the gate because the $400,000 that the town generously approved for funding the sped stabilization account was somehow misunderstood by both the finance committee and the town manager as being a one-time expense. Our sped costs have been increasing at a significantly higher rate than the overall school budget costs. And to give context, fiscal 18 sped cost average on a statewide basis are, have increased 8.1% year over year. And the circuit breaker funding for fiscal 18 has been approved at 4.5%, with the gap being shifted to school and town operating budgets. Second point that I've raised in the past is the, the, the schools not just made the choice, but also were required in many ways to make a step change increase in the investment of our technology spend. Much of that spend was originally occurring outside of the school operating budget. Much of the investment was funded in the capital building projects and, and the investment of 300,000 per year for four years was carried by the town generously to support our laptop program. When we analyze the comprehensive cost of technology and when that includes both the hardware, the software, and the infrastructure, the annual cost to the schools and to the town is in excess of a million dollars per year. And increasingly, as we move further and further away from the town building project, those costs are now being shifted into the school's operating budget. So relative to fiscal, and I think this can be laid out in much greater detail, but relative to fiscal 18's operating budget, 730,000 that was paid for by the town outside of the school's operating budget has now been shifted, 300,000 from the laptop lease has been shifted to the school budget and no additional support was provided for extraordinary expenses relates, related to special education. So don't have anything additional to add. I think if we take the opportunity to have discussions in a presentation at town meeting, I think we just need to thoughtfully and carefully lay out our process and our justification for the budget request and, and ultimately get the feedback of the town. I, I do want to say, I think it's important we keep the March 7th date as a school committee meeting date. I'm hopeful that we're not done negotiating with the town, and hopefully we could close that gap further, and the 7th will be the last opportunity for us to meet before town meeting, and then we will go ahead and move on after town meeting. Whatever the budget is, we'll manage as best we can for fiscal 19, but I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that costs, particularly as it relates to special education and technology, are not increasing at a 3% annualized rate, they're increasing at a much higher rate. So, fiscal 20 will be significantly worse if the town accepts the recommended budget by both FinCom and the town manager. So, that was a mouthful.
Very well said.
Anyhow, I thought it would be helpful if I put it in writing, because I think at this point, it's just best if we make the case to the town directly, and, and we'll, we'll manage to the outcome that the town decides. Questions, comments?
Do we have, I, I don't have a lot of experience at town meeting, but you're recommending that that basically be the, the, the presentation, or what we would say at the town meeting, right? Do we have permission to, to somehow graphically represent what you're talking about?
Well, we'll make, yeah, we have an opportunity to make a presentation.
Okay.
And I, and I want to say, in both fiscal 14 and fiscal 15, the school committee voted a different number than FinCom and town manager.
Mm-hmm.
It's happened in the past. Often, an agreement can be reached just before town meeting.
Yeah.
But going with a number that's different than what both finance committee and the town manager have recommended, there, there's very recent precedent in our town for it. So, there's some, you know, there's been some pushback that this is sort of unprecedented, that the school committee would take this position to town meeting, but I think that's what we feel is the responsible thing to do. So, we'll have ample opportunity to make a presentation at town meeting, answer questions from residents, and also the issue will be debated, because there'll be two different budgets being suggested for, for the town to consider and ultimately vote upon.
We also think it's important at town meeting, you know, both the piece together presentation, but we'll probably make almost a full presentation that we made here, that we made at finance committee, because I, I just think it's a compelling story, and, the residents, I think, deserve to know what amount of work we've done this year to create, in my opinion, the highest level of transparency anywhere.
Yeah.
And, and so, just even walking through how we, how we built the budget, I think, is, is, is important, and again, right now, we have no other way to deliver that other than take it directly to the voters.
Yeah.
The parents, I think, certainly, and we've, we've sent it out, it's been pretty widely disseminated, I think, for the most, and we'll keep on doing more of that, but I think it's well-received when you hear it. Whether or not it leads to a, a different number, time will tell, but as far as at town meeting, I think people need to hear what you've all heard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They need to see it, though.
Yeah, right, right.
And not, not even in, just in the artifacts that we've seen. I mean, if it's residents of the town, I, I can't visualize it yet, but I think they need to see something that will give them an aha moment at the right time, to say that, oh, I see now, like, this sped thing is, is here, where the assumption was that it was here, and there was a communication breakdown here, and it's, you know what I mean?
Yeah, for sure.
Like, I think, rather than just hearing it, or even just seeing it in a spreadsheet, I think they sort of need to see it in such a way where, well, they'll be able to crystallize it, and make it, hopefully, like, an emotional informant.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, one of the, the things as it relates to the process, there aren't a consistent set of assumptions, and also, historical data presented in a way that you normally would when establishing budget framework and budget discussions. What I mean by that is, I think, I think all town departments, including the school committee, should have five years of historical trends, both school budgets, as well as town revenue, and town spending priorities, and then also, what are the underlying assumptions that underpin our fiscal 2019 budget? And I'll give you an example. Town revenue grew by 5.2% in fiscal 18 over fiscal 17. The assumed growth is 2.6% for fiscal 19. That, that number wasn't communicated in advance, wasn't made part of the budget framework discussion, so the process has more or less been, a bottom-line number is presented, and we've already maybe done a budget, maybe our budget hasn't been voted on, as was the case this year.
Yeah.
And so, there wasn't that opportunity upfront to be on-side with everyone looking at similar numbers, having a good understanding of what town obligations are, like debt service, health insurance contributions, what projected revenue is, what's historical trends. So, so I think we want to make sure we have good visibility on the numbers, but I'm, I can say with confidence that a $300,000 budget gap is not a significant disconnect, and I'm hopeful that we can still come closer. As an example, the town put $400,000 into a sped stabilization fund one time last year. So, I think we have to lay out a case, and what I believe is, year-over-year, the growth in the operating resources available to the school are increasing by 1.5%, because last year, or fiscal 18, $400,000 went into sped stabilization to offset operating costs in our operating budget this year, as well as a $300,000 town-provided laptop lease. So, the 300 is shifted into our operating budget, and we have to be able to lay this out in a way that's very clear.
Yeah.
And provide context, because the criticism that's been expressed is, the school committee is making a budget without real understanding of what the town's resources are, and, and the response has been, we just don't have the money. And I think we don't have the information, so that's why I'm saying, as we look ahead to fiscal 20, I think we have to be much more, it must, I think it needs to be much more collaboration earlier in the process, that we understand the underlying assumptions.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, since we took a vote on December 20th, and the finance committee voted earlier, there's been no progress in, in closing that gap, and I think part of it was because there was a disconnect. They really believed that the $400,000 sped stabilization was a one-time expense, and we articulated, I think, very clearly and accurately, that that was an extraordinary increase that was not budgeted, but the costs are continuing, because those are students that are in our district.
Right.
It was not possibly a one-time expenditure, and in a sense, that's the entire budget difference. It's more than the budget difference. So, so I think, I think we may not get the support of the town, because we have essentially a month to really prepare. It's disappointing, we didn't make progress since December 20th, but that's, it is what it is. So, I think the right thing for us to do is make the case, we may not convince the voters this year, and in the context of the overall town budget, it's fractional percentages, the difference where apart. So, we'll just have to see where things go.
You know, I'll also add too, you know, the, the only movement actually since then is movement we made, and so we contributed, I just want to remind us that we contributed an extra $150,000 from our circuit breaker, right? And it's getting us away from conservatism, right? And when we have discussions about the budget, no one wants to budge from being conservative with their projections, whether it's revenue or expenses, but we've, they've asked us to, you know, and that, that makes me a little nervous. So, we have made movement, but it's, it's the only movement that, that's been made is, is from the schools, $150,000, so, it's just not quite a level, level field there.
And we, and the update that you gave earlier from your meeting today was that 17, 18 circuit breaker is going to go up a little bit, but the one for 19, which is what we're talking about, is actually going to go down significantly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're underwater in 18. Thankfully, the town provided resources in sped stabilization, but it's being underfunded by the state, and, and, you know, sped is federally mandated, and it's not federally and state-funded. I mean, it's shifting, those costs are shifting increasingly to, to communities and towns. But that, that's not, that's not, that's, you know, the, the technology piece is something that we all have to recognize, was paid for outside of the school's budget, and is increasingly shifting into our school budget. So, the town has said we provided a lease for four, uh, four years, it's now part of the school's operating budget, which is completely appropriate, but we still have those needs, and we, we have, we have increasing needs in some ways in terms of our technology spend. When we recognize, all of the infrastructure has a limited life. Now, some of it could be five years, some of it could be seven, maybe a bit longer, but there's a lot of renewal that has to take place, and a lot of the infrastructure technologies changing very quickly, so.
One just logistical question in terms of doing this. I think I've heard in the past that if, if you're going to make a proposal on the floor to a different budget than what they are proposing, you have to come prepared, saying where the money's going to come from.
So, I think the answer will be, we will be prepared, but we're not tonight.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, but that's, and, and, you know, again, in-town meeting, the community decides, and the community votes, and, and we have to, we have to be prepared to answer questions and to educate, and that, we have to provide clear information that's easy to understand, and then we'll have to, you know, the, the voters will have to decide what outcome, what the outcome is.
Yeah.
So, and again, I don't want to rule out the potential of meeting, you know, have a meeting of the minds between now and March 10th, but I'm not optimistic, given how it's gone so far, which is disappointing. I mean, I don't, I don't know why we got to this point.
Could be us.
But I think, you know, I think we're, I think it's responsible, and we've been very thoughtful and deliberate about what we believe is the right resources we need to operate the schools next year.
I do have one question that came from the Clipper article today covering the selectman meeting. One of the comments about not having the money, especially in regards to the $174,000 ask for the 2.9 FTEs, their comment was, it's not just that, it's also the health insurance for those employees, which I didn't consider, so can you speak to that?
Well, it just not, it's not a guarantee that those people would take health insurance. In fact, they're not, no, most of those, Dave looked into it yesterday, most of those, all those people, I think, are existing employees who won't necessarily need. And I, I'd say this too, and it's a fair question, okay, it's a real cost, but when we're cutting staff potentially, we're going to have to ask ourselves, is that savings coming back to us too, okay? It has to work both ways, and it's just, it's just not right now. So, it's a good question, but that assumes that 100% of those people are going to take full health insurance, it just doesn't happen, it's not a realistic number.
Well, and, and, you know, an obvious question, if, if our revenue grew by 5.2% last year, is it really half for fiscal 19? I mean, to me, that's a very justifiably conservative, but is it potentially overly conservative?
Yeah.
And I don't think we've been provided, and, and hopefully, a town meeting will have historical context, so we know exactly, five-year history, and why we're assuming half the growth in fiscal 19, underpinning our budget discussions versus fiscal 18 actual. Just, right, the economy is strong, real estate values are high, it's primary sources of our revenue in town. My suspicion is, okay, it's, it's appropriate to budget conservatively, we're not trying to advocate for the town to be unconservative, but I think when the numbers have seen, when we shine a light on what the impact will be of the proposed fiscal FinCom and town manager recommended budget, it's, it's significantly below projected revenue increases. So, we're not asking for a bigger share of town revenue, we're asking for a consistent share over the last five-year average, and I can say it's been very...
The pie is probably bigger than what they're predicting it's going to be.
Yeah, and there's been growth in free cash, there's been growth in our stabilization fund, the town is, you know, incurred a lot of debt, so I don't want to lose sight, and we all appreciate that we've undergone renewal, not just in the schools, but the school is the most expensive renewal, 50- to 60-year life of our new facilities, but that's a major increase in the debt service obligations of the town, the schools are benefiting that, but that doesn't allow us to operate our schools if we have increased our debt service to pay for buildings that are going to last 50 and 60 years.
Right.
The police department has a brand-new facility, the fire department has a greatly expanded facility, senior center has a proposal to, this is something the town has undergone a renewal, and the schools are certainly appreciative of the generosity of the town and the state that allowed this to be possible, but that doesn't allow us to meet our obligations to our, our faculty and our students, because that's for our facilities.
Right.
So, yeah, so, so I think March 7th, we should hold the date.
Yeah.
And I think in the meantime, we'll be, what I, I plan to do, so they don't hear from somebody else, I plan to reach out to the finance committee and the town manager and, and forward this material that I, I wrote tonight, just so they understand the position we're taking, and not trying to be adversarial or confrontational, but we think we've voted a very responsible and appropriate budget for fiscal 19 for the schools. And I, I have great conviction, as you can tell, I believe, and I know you all do, I think you share, um, share my conviction that I think this is appropriate school budget for next year.
Yeah.
I also think Peter, I think Peter's statement is exceptional, and I think it's that, it's actually worthy of sending it out maybe to the broader community at, by the end of the week. If, well, Peter, you have to be comfortable with that, but we have to start kind of...
Yeah, I mean, I think we...
Advertising, if you will, that we're going forward with the plan.
Yeah, yeah, and we're not, again, we're not, I, you know, right, I've been like, let's get it done, let's, let's agree on a number that we can work with and focus on next year, focus on running the schools, but I think, I honestly feel that the lack of flexibility in terms of even any integration of our, our stated priorities and needs. So, there's just been no movement in terms of the willingness to recognize what our, what our priorities and budget requirements are. So, I think that, you know, from my standpoint, I don't think that's good governance, frankly, to be told, here's a number, that's it. We, as Dr. Antonucci said, we didn't need to prepare a budget if that was going to be the case, if the number was already decided in advance. Could have saved all of us a lot of time and, and effort if that number was just communicated. Kelly, you mentioned, in Marshfield, they say they get 42% of Marshfield's operating budget every year, no discussion, no negotiation, it makes it easy. We don't have that, but we are told a number, and that's been the case the time that I've served on the school committee. So, I'd like to see that process changed, and I think we have a new, you know, we, I think we want to engage with the finance committee, the fiscal advisory committee, the selectmen, and we have a new time, uh, town finance director and the town manager, try and engage with those groups and, and get on the same page in terms of the budget process, because I think there's opportunities to improve that, because we don't want to create a budget that's unrealistic, and if we're going to be told we're creating a budget that's unrealistic, we spare ourselves a lot of time and effort if that's the case, right? We want to have better visibility and understanding upfront on, on, on both our needs and priorities and, and choices and priorities the town is making.
Yeah, but I think you're right to say that we need to know what the parameters are upfront, because we find ourselves in a position now where the budget that the town has, the selectmen have approved for the schools is not what we consider to be in the best interests of our students, and that's our responsibility, is to have an effective education department that's also efficient, and I think we can be confident that it's efficient. So, our budget calculation is what we think is needed for, for the school department to be effective in fiscal year 19. If the entire town budget has limitations, which it, it obviously does, we should be made aware of them on a, on a regular basis, because then we can make the determination that the budget we propose is the best possible within the limitations that we're functioning in, but we don't, we haven't been familiar with the limitations in prior years, and in the absence of the clear information that you are suggesting we work to obtain with the town, you know, we just have to go with what we think is effective and efficient, and, you know, that's where we are now. And effective and efficient, to me, is responsible, and then we talk about it in-town meeting.
Well, and I think historically, it has been an effective and efficient budget, but we've been given a number, and there hasn't been pushback, so that's resulted in cuts in staff, or programs, or supplies, or new books, or whatever, wherever we've had to cut. So, this has been ongoing, and I just feel that this is the first time we've sort of taken a stand, because John has made it so transparent, and so we can really see what, you know, there, there have been asks in the past, but... And so, we can really see what, you know, there have been asks in the past, but they haven't been met. And now, we are where we're at, with 30 kids in accelerated classes in the middle school, and parents paying for tutors, which we have said over and over, is in public education, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, my daughter's in a class at the high school that has 35 students in it. God love the teacher, because when I taught, I had 35 students one year, and it's very difficult to get done what needs to be done, but...
It's not the optimal learning environment.
Correct. So, those are the decisions the town has to make. Is that okay?
That's right.
Is that what we consider Duxbury proficient, or however we want to, if we want to rank ourselves on a chart, right?
Yeah.
And, yeah, so, more to come.
But I like that you've picked apart the finance piece, and sort of where, how do we get to that number? Why are we being offered that? What is the revenue? What are the sources?
Yeah.
Like, all that mystery is sort of being unshrouded.
Yeah, and it's, it's a work in process, because there's, there's not a consistent set of schedules that we can look at and say, okay, here's the five-year history, here's current year, and here's projected next year. But I'll just give you an example. I've done that for school operating budgets. Those are voted on at town meetings, so you can pull the numbers right off the Duxbury town website. But based on conversations with the finance manager, John Madden, he had the good suggestion, and I discussed it with him, and I'm saying, okay, but this, the resources available to operate the schools have included funds provided by the town. So, for four years, those funds have been $300,000 per year for laptop leases. One year, there was an $80,000 appropriation to fund the first year of a teacher's contract. Last year, there was a $400,000 contribution to SPED stabilization fund, which was used to support operations. So, I provided what I called an adjusted operating budget, which what resources provided by the town was used over the last five years to support operating our schools. The historical increase has been 3.1%. So, over the last five years, the average increase was 3.1%. The proposed budget voted on and approved by the finance committee and the town manager is a 1.5% increase. Now, you could argue that's not really true, because the budget number is a bigger increase over last year's budget, but there was $730,000 of additional funds that were provided by the town last year directly to support fiscal 18 operations, of which $400,000 is no longer forthcoming. So, the increase that we voted, I think, in very real terms, is less than a 2% increase over last year's operating budget. True operating budget that we use to operate the school. So, I think, I think, I think we run the risk of being perceived as being irresponsible and just saying what we believe the school's needs are, and not being sensitive to the town's resources, but I think this is a highly responsible ask, and I think if we, if the town accepts the number that's been voted on by the finance committee, it's a significant reduction over the last five-year historical average increase for the schools to operate. We can't control the growth in special education, technology, you could say, now, we talk about it as a utility, it's like heat, light, the standardized testing is required on a laptop. It's not like Duxbury was the only school that's done this in the Commonwealth. Every school has done it. Maybe not in our exact same way, in our exact same speed, but, so I think this, I think we just have to be able to make the case, but I am 100% confident that we don't have full knowledge of the facts yet, but I think we're asking for something which is very affordable, reasonable, and is not a budget breaker in terms of the overall town finances. It's a question of priorities, you know? So, we're not responsible for overall town priorities. Anything, anything else? Have we had enough for tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see what else is, what else is on the agenda.
Public.
Lisa, you seem to be the most regular attendee. We're not exactly lighting the public on fire here. Haven't been a lot of members of the public attending. Hopefully, that changes. Hopefully, we'll get interest next year. And I appreciated the editorial you wrote, which is really encouraging people to be involved, so I agree with you on that. Okay, so, no other business? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned. Meeting adjourned.